And it's gonna be responsibility presented by Memorial Elementary School. Do we need to go out in the crowd and watch? I don't know, sure what the presentation's like, so. Okay.
I'm Mrs. DeSimone. I teach kindergarten and first grade at Memorial Elementary and I run student council. So I'd like to introduce to you Amelia, our president, and Jason, our vice president, to share some words on our character, word of the month, which is responsibility.
Hi, I'm Amelia.
And I'm Jason.
We're excited to be here this afternoon to share thoughts on responsibility.
Responsibility means doing what you are supposed to do. It means being a good friend to others and helping others when they need help.
I am responsible when I can take care of things around the house. I like to help my mom clean and I try to be helpful with my little brothers.
Responsible people make... Responsible people are caring, they make good choices and help lead others by setting a good example.
A responsible person is someone who is accountable for their actions.
I agree. Without responsibility, how are you supposed to trust someone?
As student council president, I thought it was important to gather thoughts from my peers on responsibility. Please enjoy the short video made by our student council.
Thank you.
How are you responsible in the classroom?
Being good, thank you.
Hi, Mrs. DeSimone. What does responsibility mean to you?
Responsibility to me means committing to completing a task that you have already started.
Good job.
Sorry when you want to work, but I'm here.
Uh, I sneak down on the carpet really quietly.
Thank you.
Not responsible.
Sure, Jason.
What does that mean?
Well, Jason, responsible means that you are doing what is expected of you. So right now, I am a music teacher, so my responsibility, or me to be responsible, is I have to teach every kid in the school music. It also means to make sure we do the things that's expected of us, like our homework, our chores, and listening to our parents and teachers. Doesn't that sound fun?
Thank you.
How are you responsible in the classroom?
Helping the teacher do work.
Thank you.
Who's the most responsible person you know?
My family.
And why do you think they're responsible?
They take care of me.
Hi, Emily. Define responsibility.
Responsibility means to do something when you are told to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeSimone, what's your responsibility at work?
Ellie, my responsibility at work is to make sure I follow the safety procedures. Make sure that I always keep clean and wash my hands every time and put gloves on. And then I help in the kitchen produce the most quality, good food for each kid here at MBS.
Hi, King. What's responsibility like? R-E-S-P. You were pretty close.
What are your responsibilities?
So I do my chores. I help my mom with her chores and I help anybody at my house with chores.
What are some of your responsibilities?
I do my laundry at home and at night I close the closets.
What are responsibilities at work?
To make sure all my students and my teachers have everything that they need.
Tell me about a time that you were responsible.
There was a time where there was a fight and I went to go tell the teachers so everybody was safe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Define responsibility.
Responsibility means to me that you're doing, that you're being respectful and doing what you're supposed to do.
What does responsibility mean to you?
To me, responsibility means doing what's expected of you, fulfilling your duties and obligations.
Good job, thank you.
Great job. School board committee reports.
I have one with the Central Florida Coalition. We had a meeting yesterday. Andrea Messina was there with the Florida School Board Association and she was talking about the upcoming conference, very excited about the speakers. We also had Senator Bill Munford, who as we all know is very entertaining and very informative. He is very high on Manny Diaz for the next commissioner of education. They have a good working relationship and he said it several times over, so looking forward to working with him. And there was other things, but that's the main highlights.
Dr. Longshore and I attended a help education forum recently. Did, I know everybody wanted to go, but we were trying, we were very important that we don't violate sunshine rules, so we didn't all want to go as a board, but we all wanted to be there, so that's okay. So just wanted to say we did attend that and learned some great things, so I'll talk more about that. Presentation of petitions, comments, concerns, or reports. We're gonna start. Again, read my little information here. The school board of Highlands County welcomes you to this meeting. This is time set aside for citizens of Highlands County to address the school board. This is not a question and answer period. The board will only receive your comments. If deemed appropriate, the board may request superintendent to obtain additional information to address your concerns. Public comment intended to allow members of the public, a forum to express their concerns regarding the operation of the school district. It's not a forum for general political speech unrelated to school operations. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to no more than five minutes. And then again, please address the board instead of the crowd. So we're gonna start. Gail, is it Arkan or Aran? I wanna make sure I have that right. Arkan, okay, gotcha. Give your name and address the board. I'm sorry, right, I'm sorry, the podium. I'm sorry. That was set up in the last meeting, I'm so sorry, yeah.
Yes, there you go. Is that good?
That should be good.
My name is Gail Arkan and I would like to express concerns about an incident that was shared with me. I own Gigi's Candy Shop in downtown Sebring. Because of this, I am grandma to a lot of kids and they talk to me about all types of topics. During one of our talks, some students can find it in me about some things going on at the school. That's at Sebring High School. One was very alarming. Apparently, there is a boy at the high school that is going around touching girls in very inappropriate places. One of the girls went to the administration and talked to them about it and she was told to take it up with a lawyer that the school won't redo anything about it. Really? That shocked me. I find this very disturbing, that this school would turn a blind eye to this kind of behavior. This should have been taken seriously. The school should have dealt with the perpetrator and his parents immediately. Not only have they failed these girls, but the boy as well, who needs help. I'm pretty ashamed of HMS administration. Our children are constantly shoved aside. When the adults who are supposed to keep them safe no longer care, they themselves give up. I myself talked to a teacher who was very honest and she told me they don't get paid enough to care. So one day I followed my grandson around school for three days. I observed how things were done. I wrote down my concerns and made an appointment with the dean. During this appointment, the dean never put her calls on hold or shut the door to her office. After 15 minutes of constant interruptions, I just got up and left. My grandson was also bullied by a student. I never said anything because I knew nothing would be done about it. Because of this, he dropped out of sports. After that, school activities, finally from school. He has unofficially been gone for four weeks and I've never even got one phone call saying, geez, he's not in school. Nobody cares. I personally know of kids dropping out of school, they hate all the drama going on. And what is the graduation rate for Sebring High School? I think as an administrator, I would kind of be ashamed to say it's really low. I would recommend an ALC, but that's for another topic. But I think things have got to change. These kids are our future. If they can't trust us and come to us for help, they're truly lost. So I believe at the last meeting, Mr. Statler challenged each of you to spend some time in the classroom and listen to the kids, hear what they're saying, and I also encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
I just have, I'm offended as far as saying no one cares. That's just, that's just wrong. We all care as far as that goes. I don't know about that particular incident, we'll, I'm sure we'll look into it, but to tell us that the teachers don't care, that teachers don't get paid enough to care and that no one else cares, that's just wrong. That's just, that's your opinion, but I feel it's wrong.
Okay, next we have Jared Eddy. Eddie, sorry. Jared Eddy, sorry about that, that's not called.
How are y'all doing? I'm Jared Eddy. Not a public speaker, so. So I'm here as a concerned parent. I've been asked by some people in the back to talk today. I'm not, not gonna focus on IMAD. We all know what it was, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's gone at the end of the school year. Still being taught today, but it's gone.
No, it's not.
Okay, but, um. You gotta give me more than four minutes if y'all wanna talk back.
I got, sorry, sorry.
Fair enough?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Our concerns as, as parents, we do not believe, what IMAD was teaching and the curriculum of IMAD, we, we don't believe in that. And I think, and I'm not here to, I'm not here to attack the board or any of y'all, just we are concerned parents. The new curriculum that will get chosen, for whatever you wanna call it, we want it to, it's gotta be absent, how do you say, absentee, uh, absence based. IMAD was teaching a lot of things that in my personal opinion, sixth graders don't need to hear, they don't need to learn about, and I, I think most of y'all or all of y'all would agree. This is Highlands County. We all, we're all from here. I know, I know some of y'all. We love this place. We, we don't, you know, we're not, I don't wanna move, y'all don't wanna move. And, and how, how, we gotta, to figure out how to fix, we gotta figure out how to fix a problem. How did IMAD get passed? It's been here for six years. I'll take responsibility that, I'm sorry, this is, I'm just now coming here, but, and we can't, with the future curriculum, we can't let that happen again. I know we've created a board, I don't know, you know, the ins and outs of it and all that, and that's great. We've got to, we just gotta do a better job, everybody. The parents, everybody. There are, I just wanna, the, the, me being one of them, there are some concerned parents. We're gonna get more involved. We are. We're gonna come to these meetings. We're gonna voice our opinions, I think. Hopefully y'all agree with all of them. Just, it's, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to blah, 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 I'm getting long-winded, but just please, and, and I wanna, I wanna, I wanna leave y'all with a task. If you wanna reach out to me or any of these parents in the back, it's not hard to find us. It's not. It's not hard to find our cell phones and our contacts. So let's get, let's get involved with each other. All I can say is, we're in crazy times, this world, and we just gotta, we just gotta all work harder. Hopefully, hopefully y'all understand. Thank you.
Gotta protect our students, that's it. Next, Stacy, Stacy Hinson.
Sorry, just one second. I'll, I'll use his time. She's like, I'll take those minutes. Good evening. I'm Stacy Hinson. I am here tonight because I wanna talk about toxic positivity. Toxic positivity is the belief that no matter how dire or difficult a situation is, people should maintain a positive mindset. Toxic positivity denies people all the authentic support they need and is brushing off problems rather than facing them. Maintaining a falsely positive facade does not allow an organization to grow. You may wonder, what am I talking about? Well, let's talk about our district grade. Highlands County has been a C since 2012. Hardy County, last year, B. Hendry County, C, last year. Okeechobee, B, last year. Why are we not a B? Looking at graduation rates, we are improving, but our district grade is not. Why? I ask you, what has and is the district doing to help turn things around that have a proven track record? Two areas, TNTP and Stocktake. First, TNTP. I know the district began working with TNTP in 2017, 2018 school year with Avon Park. How long has the district going to throw money for TNT to help turn around schools? I know Avon Park Middle School received PDs, district instructional coaches assisted with developing PLCs. I have even heard that Avon Park Middle School is a model school for running PLCs. Yet I ask you this, where is the student growth? The purpose of the PLCs is to improve instruction with equal student achievement. Has Avon Park been able to show sustainable change after working with TNTP? How many teacher coaching cycles actually happened? How many coaches were successful and documented student center coaching? How many times did TNTP walk buildings with admin with building coaches present? What was the feedback? How was the feedback shared? How much face-to-face training and coaching in PD has and will the district be using with TNTP? How much money will we continue to give to them where I have not seen our district grade change at all? And then in 2122, we started with Stocktake. How is Stocktake actually helping our students? Where is the research pulling key instructional staff members away from students for meetings benefiting schools? Why are we not targeting struggling schools with new administrators for support instead of requiring all schools to participate? How many meetings are actually happening? Who is really preparing for these meetings? Is this someone's personal vision? Is, what is this program actually doing for our students? District grade is based largely on student scores and growth. How are we providing the best educators for our students? What are the real number of substitutes in the classroom on a daily basis? Long-term subs, non-certified teachers, or the fact many students have had multiple teachers this school year? Why is this information so hard to find? Why are we not recognizing and highlighting our local talent? I would stand behind the majority of our administrators, teachers, and non-instructional personnel against any district in this state. Why are we being told about the amazing job an administrator's doing in another district? I can tell you we have some of the best administrators I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Our district has the best group of teachers as well as non-instructional staff. What is it and why is it our district leaders need to fill, fill the need to go outside the district to highlight what is good? I call this toxic positivity. I have shared with you all my concerns about HGMS, legitimate concerns that could easily be double-checked, yet I've only had one school member, board member, willing to question what is going on. Why? Why are the rest of you not asking questions? Is it because it's not your school, so it's not your concern? Is our district focused on the process and not results? I wanna leave you with a quote by Donald McGannett. Leadership is an action, not a position. I challenge you to be, to act, to do what is right for the students, staff members, and our community. And I'm glad they came and talked about responsibility because as school board members, are you not responsible to the public? Are you not responsible to be acting in what's best for our students and our community? Thank you.
We're always available, all of us. That's what I'll add, so Larry Overfield.
Good evening, school board. Larry Overfield, CPT. Proverbs verse, or chapter one, verse seven says, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge." The Hebrew word translated knowledge here can be translated, a couple other words depending on how it's used, like knowing, learning, discernment, insight, notion. Let me give you a brief history on the education of America. In 1636, Harvard set their rules of precepts and they declared that every student be plainly instructed and earnestly pressed to consider well, main, consider well the main end of his life and studies is to know God and Jesus Christ, which is eternal life, John, chapter seventeen, verse three. And therefore, to lay Christ in the bottom is the only foundation of all sound knowledge and learning. And seeing the Lord only giveth, I don't usually talk that way, wisdom, that everyone seriously set himself by prayer and secret to seek it of him. This is Proverbs, chapter two and Proverbs, chapter three. Everyone shall so exercise himself in reading the scriptures twice a day that he shall be ready to give such an account of his proficiency therein." You think Harvard's like that now? In 1642, Massachusetts passed the old deluder Satan law. In 1647, Connecticut followed, to teach reading and writing through the scriptures. Any town that reached 100 households shall set up a grammar school. In 1779, chiefs of the Delaware Indian Tribe brought three youths to George Washington to be trained in American schools. Commending the chiefs for their decision, he told them, "You do well to wish to learn our arts and ways of life, and above all, the religion of Jesus Christ. These will make you a greater, happier people than you are. Congress will do everything they can to assist you in this wise intention." Congress? All right. The Northwest Ordinance signed into law on August 7th, 1789. That's just 14 months after the ratification of the Constitution. Legal texts consider this law one of the four foundational organic laws of our founding states, requirements for statehood. Article three of the ordinance says, "Religion, morality, and knowledge, being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and the means of education shall ever be encouraged." Religion, and our founding fathers used that term when we're speaking about biblical Christianity. Morality and knowledge. Our founding fathers believed they should be taught in our schools and they were encouraged. As you can see, they were a requirement of statehood. That is, the states were responsible for public education, not federal government. The philosophy of education continued well into the 20, this philosophy of education continued well into the 20th century. Several, several public schools across the nation taught Bible study courses of the Old and New Testaments that counted towards graduation in those schools. 1962, the Supreme Court published its opinion on school prayer violating the First Amendment. 1963, it published its opinion on Bible reading for the same reasons. These are opinions that are supposed to be governed by the Constitution, not law. Opinions. The First Amendment is not violated because schools are not federal institutions. They, but local and state institutions. When we take federal dollars, hang on, when we take federal dollars, that can come with strings attached to it, like, you know, if you don't fire that prosecutor, you ain't getting the money. George Washington, speaking of Americans, wrote in the farewell address, his farewell address, "With slight shades of differences, you have the same religion, manners, habits, and political principles." That has changed since 1796. We are now many religions, different manners and habits, and we have many competing political principles. However, we are under the same God, whether you believe it or not, and we are under the same Constitution ratified June 21st, 1788, whether you honor that or not. God bless America. God bless our biblical constitution and our education. Thank you for hearing me out again.
Amen. Linda Montalbano. Am I getting closer to the pronunciation of Miss Montalbano? Cause I've got that southern accent, I have a hard time sometimes with that.
She's walking up, so we're okay.
Linda Montalbano. I'm a special education advocate and I come to the meetings also for the Highlands County Tea Party. We had a meeting about a week and a half ago. I was glad to see a lot of school board people at that meeting. And my concern is that there were things brought out about the math book, that we've got one of them. I'd like to see that without argument or fight, we purge our school district of anything that's already been found not to be appropriate. But more so, the Tea Party here had people who wanted to look and review your books. And we also have a few people who do mentoring also from the Tea Party. I had asked a while back when we did that, is that you put all the textbooks that are in the school district on Bookshare. Bookshare is a free program for people who have, are visually impaired or have dyslexia and have reading difficulties. I'd like to see you again, you, mostly you chose Ally Learning, which is basically for school kids. I'd rather see you put it, Bookshare, all the textbooks for two reasons. One, everybody and anybody in the community can access Bookshare. Either they become a member for free or they can pay to go on Bookshare. And the other is, since our children are not reading on grade level, and we know that many of them are at elementary levels in reading, doing ninth through 12th grade textbooks while they're reading at third, fourth, fifth grade levels, they're not able to have the comprehension and get the correct information out of the textbooks. But if they're on Bookshare, they open up the social studies book to chapter five, they push a button, it's on the computer, it reads it to them as well as they're able to see it, which is improves reading and improves comprehension. If they don't know a word, they can click on it and it will say the word over and over again, it'll go word, 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 so you can learn how to pronounce it. And if you don't know the definition, that's another one. You just click on it, it will give you the definition, it'll be read to you. I feel that would be a big improvement for a lot of our children who don't know how to read to grade level. And also, the reason I push Bookshare with all my kids that I rep- And also, the reason I push Bookshare with all my kids that I represent and assist is because I want them to go on to college. And Learning Ally doesn't tend to go up there, but my kids go to college, and they're able to access their college textbooks with it. But the best is, everybody in the community could then access all your books if they're either got it for free, or if they pay for a membership. Now, the other thing is, is I've been asking for 19 years, since I've been here, to please get Orton Gillingham. Today, you don't have to have Orton Gillingham teachers. It's now on a computer chip. It's not going to have any of this woke business and other stuff. It's 100 years old. So I would rather you bring in the reading program for Orton Gillingham and start teaching the kids to really how to read. And it's, it's here, like I said, for over 100 years, and it works. Instead, you guys buy programs that are like Orton Gillingham or based on Orton Gillingham. Let's just buy the Orton Gillingham program. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Going down instead of, I don't know what we've got going on there. Okay. Jesse Sapp.
I'm Jesse Sapp. I might have to go fast, because I've got a lot tonight. First thing is, again, the videos, the YouTube videos. Last I heard, the last answer I got back from anybody at the school board office was, "It's a work in progress." What that means, if anybody doesn't know, is we don't want to hear it anymore. That's what it means at the district office. If they tell you it's a work in progress, it means leave us alone about it. We want the YouTube videos back. The audio is, it's good, but it's not like the videos. And it's not, if they can't tell me that it's an ADA issue, because the audio has, if you can't hear, you cannot hear the audio. With the video, at least you can read lips, or you can turn on the closed captions. It at least has some ADA accessibility to it where the audio doesn't. We, there's, I've had four or five people ask me just in the last couple of days, "Hey, have you heard anything else about the videos?" They really want the videos back. The next thing is the community involvement in the Health Education Committee meetings. I got a phone call, obviously I wasn't picked, no problem there, but some other people were told that the meetings were going to be closed. I know it's since been reversed, and there was some talk about a House bill that hasn't come to fruition yet, or it's not in action yet. It has nothing to do with the meetings being closed. There's case law from 1974 all the way up to September of the past year that says, "The textbook selection committees must be open to the public and advertised." So that has nothing to do with the new House bill. This committee, the way it was set up, has got to be open to the public, just like this meeting is tonight. There's no other, there's no other way that it can be legally. There was a 1974, Florida, Florida DCA, 1974, Town of Palm Beach v. Gradison, says, "It is an irreparable injury to violate the sunshine law." Irreparable, I mean, you can't fix it. So we have, we have to have transparency. Transparency and accountability are what we're all looking for. That's why we're all here. We, we want to know what's going on. We want to be there, we want to see what's going on. We don't want to see it in a report after everybody's mulled it over and maybe, maybe been swayed in one direction or another by somebody. We, we don't know that. But if we sit there and see it, we're going to know, because we're going to be at those meetings, we're going to know what happened. I'm, I'm still not sure how this committee was formed. The policy, the board policy, 0155 and 9140 both say, "The board may establish committees." I haven't found anywhere where it says the superintendent establishes committees. The policy 9140 says that the board will approve the committee members picked from the public. The superintendent will pick the committee members from the, from the teachers or whatnot, but the superintendent will approve the members of the public. I think that would have been pretty nice, seeing that we've been through six years of indoctrination, if you will, of our kids, and now we just hand the reins back to the same person who started this six years ago. And we just give it right back to them and start over again. Do we, is she going to do the same thing as she did last time? How do we know? We need the district to go back to a system of transparency and accountability. We need to get, we need to go back to that. It's got, we've lost that somewhere along the way. I'm not totally, completely, I'm not saying that everything, every aspect of this is not transparent, or not, there's no accountability. There's a lot of lack of accountability happening here in this district office. Transparency is one way to start fixing that. If everything's out in the open, I've, I've asked for things that I know were sitting on a desk here at this office, and they, they tell me, "Well, it's not quite ready yet." I just, I just talked to somebody who said it was ready, and now I can't get it because you say it's not ready. That's not transparent. That's, you're, you're holding something back, and for whatever reason. Whenever somebody asks for something, they should get it as fast as they can get it. I, I understand things happen, and people are busy and whatnot, but as fast as we can get it. The last thing I have is something that I've already talked about the first time that I came here. I've been through your policies, the board policies, on making a complaint on somebody who was hired here, and I've already said it, was found by law enforcement to have committed two counts of battery against kids in that person's care. Then, when they applied to, when they applied to Highlands County for a job here, they lied on their job application. I've been through your policy, I've made a complaint to the superintendent, or to the deputy superintendent, to the superintendent. I've talked, I've forwarded a letter to Mr. Thor as, as requested in the, in the policy. I have no, I have, I haven't heard anything back. I, I want to, I want to talk to you guys in person. I want to come and, and give you the information so that you can see it, because apparently you weren't given, given the information.
Like, we're the end, but you can contact each one of us personally. I know I'm going to be coming up. So I told you, I've had a meeting.
No, I mean, I've emailed all of you about this, and no, no response.
You must not have my right email, because I haven't gotten one.
You haven't gotten an email? I will make sure that you have it tonight, I promise. Has anybody else not gotten it? Because I will forward it to you again.
I use most of my personal email, as far as that goes.
Can I get it from you after the, after the meeting? Okay. Thanks. I'll, I'll get it from both of you.
John Scott is next.
Is this mic on? It is? I've never spoke on a mic. So my wife just called and put me on, put my name on there, and said, "Say something." But look, I, thinking of something to say. I don't, I don't, we moved here in '05. I'm talking to them, and I'm not really supposed to. We moved here in '05. These, look at these fine folks. I think they represent our ideals. And, and, and by the way, my thoughts are always, why don't we have a statewide school board? We have a county school board, because I think we're required to reflect our, you know, our community, which goes unsaid, how our community votes and everything else. So you guys kind of regard or reflect our views. And Ms. Howard is great. I mean, everybody, I just met you at the races the other day, at the, I mean, these are great folks. They don't, you know, they, they, they represent us well. And so I want you guys to do an exercise with me. Ms. Howard, and your dogs bark in my camp, and you guys hear my airboat noise all the time, and we hear your dogs barking. I just, I mean, that's the kind of neighborhood I want, hound dogs, you know what I mean? You guys all notice, right? I, I mean, Isaac volleyball, I really appreciate that. Why did I say all that? I want you guys to do an exercise. Close your eyes, and envision this committee, and just because some representative of some program, or, or, you know, that was similar to IMED, comes in and is great at rhetoric, and they're great at, you know, sophistry, and they paint some picture, and you start nodding your head, hey, that's what we got to do, that reason, because it's unavoidable. We, the state, you know, whatever kind of stuff that Mr. McClure would, would say, "We have to go with this because of the grant," you know, or whatever, some such thing. These numbers are going to quadruple. We don't have time to keep doing this. Just pass what these folks want. We don't want 10 times these, all, all these, look at these good old boys back here. We don't want that. It won't end, it won't, it won't get off the desk. You know what I mean? We don't want that. We have to get back to hiring more people like Lyle Pontius at the middle school. If you guys had 100 of him, we would have great scores. Brian Lang, my boy, says he's a great teacher, I'm not even going to go through the name drop of them, but all four of my kids have Pontius, and I can tell you, it made a huge, a fork in the road. I mean, it made their, their futures better. And that's our job, you know? Budgets, solvency, or, you know, I don't know what the word is, and, and I know the private sector word, but I don't know what the public, you know, how, how you guys have to do it. That's your job. When you step in, and I've heard, you know, I've only started going to school board meetings a year ago, you need to do it in the interest of these folks. You don't need to, you know, you know, I know you probably have a, some kind of job description which says you have to do it. Everything we do, and then I guess, how, how does it work, Brenda? I don't know. You have to listen to these folks, or you have to take in their, their opinions? You don't have to answer, I understand that, but see how, see how bad my civics class was? Right? So if you guys pick, close your eyes, and you go through this committee, and you pick something counter to what these folks want, they'll be back four times, and it'll be on the desk in August, and we still didn't get to hiring more Lyle Pontius and stuff like that, which, to get our grades up. So why on earth would you entertain anybody who comes up and says something counter to the program that these ladies want? No reason, it'd be a waste of our time, and you guys, time is valuable. I know, everybody's trying to raise kids, or, you know, or whatever. You don't want to be here for hours listening. And the last name drop I got to say, I just met Larry months ago, and I have seen people kind of just kind of go, oh, here we go. That man is the best resource in Highlands County. What he says about the Northwest and stuff, and, and, and school, it's, it's all true, because it, it's amazing. The stuff he says, he's well-read. If, if, we, we could use him as a resource, we could use these ladies as a resource that are good at rhetoric, we could use these gentlemen. You know, we don't have to be, have an adversarial relationship here. Hey, what do you guys think? Boom, it's done, it's off the desk. Now we're working on the budget. So I just see it kind of a waste of time, maybe some people are like holding ground or something, that's just strange. We don't need to do that. We, we have, there is an Orange County school board, and there is a Highlands County school board, and we don't need to explain it. There's not one school board for the whole state, and our Highlands County school board tells our, you know, superintendent, this is what we want, and this is how we're going to do it. And so we just kind of rubber stamping and get on to the business of hiring more teachers. I hear we have a teacher shortage or whatever, I'm not even sure about all that. But anyways, thank you for your time.
You did a great job for speaking in the microphone for not having a lot of experience, you claim, so.
I, I would say if you know of any of Lyle's brothers or cousins, encourage them to apply, okay?
We are looking for good people to put in front of students all the time, and we want the best students for, to be in front of students. Exactly. Okay, that's it for now. Okay, do we need a break? Are we good? Superintendent's report.
All right. First of all, I just want you guys to know how much I appreciate you being here. It's very clear you love this community. You love the folks that are in this community. You love your children and grandchildren and nieces and nephews, and I care deeply about this education system. As you guys know, most of you know, I was born and raised here, and I care deeply about this education system as well. I went through it, my children went through it, my grandchildren have just started into it, one in fourth grade, one in second grade, and one in kindergarten. So I care deeply on the decisions that this board makes, that we make as educators, as principals, as teachers. I think we have some of the very best teachers and leaders across this nation, not just in this state, that are sitting in our schools, and I'm so very thankful for them. I also want you to know that my doors are always open. If you've got questions, concerns, you've got kids coming and talking with your ears, I've spoken with people all the time. I have meetings, meetings, meetings with folks about any concerns, things they want to brag about, things they want to cry about. Whatever the issues are, come see me. My doors are always open. This board is always open to hear from you. I'm so thankful you're here. I don't want you to stop coming. Keep coming. You're right, whoever spoke a few minutes ago, we need all of us working together. We absolutely do. We serve over 12,000 kids, almost 13,000 kids every day. We have 1,600 employees. There's no way 1,600 employees can give everything we need to give to our kids every day in the schools. We need you, we depend on you. I just met with the Teachers of the Year just yesterday. I meet with them every month, and they're so distraught about the attendance across this district with kids coming to school every day. One of, even our kindergarten teachers yesterday said, "I had six kids out of 18 that weren't in my classroom today." So we've got to come together as a community to do what is right for our kids. And I just thank you for being here. I thank you for letting your voices be heard. I did have a great response from this community in regard to the review health committee. 87, actually, put their name on the online application, and I was very, very thankful for that. I did reach out to all, I guess it wasn't 87, it was 89, thank you, 89, and I did reach out to each one of them to be able to talk with them about the process. When I spoke with the 89, for the ones that weren't on the committee, I shared with them at that time that it would be a closed committee for the committee to work together and then go out to the public. That's the way we have always done our curriculum adoption. The teachers, educators would get together, make the decisions with all of the stakeholders and staff members about whatever curriculum that they were wanting to choose, and then those choices would be out for the public in a noticed meeting, and then that community could give input on that curriculum. The law will change on July 1, and so all of our meetings from the beginning will have parents included in the committees, and they will also be opened and public and noticed. And so rather than waiting to July 1, I thought this would be a great committee to go ahead and move forward with these committee meetings being open to our public. There's a lot of interest, and this is a great time to start in this process. So I did give all of the 24 community members, parents, and teachers make up the committee, along with Mr. Durance will serve as the 25th as the board chair. And those, I gave those names to Dr. Campbell yesterday. So I think her intention is to reach out to that committee tomorrow to make sure their email is working back and forth, and then she will start scheduling those meetings, and those will be noticed, so you'll know about those meetings. I'm not sure exactly where we're going to hold them yet, because I do think there'll be folks that will want to come and listen as that committee is working together, but all of that information will be out to you. We will be continuing to accept curriculum until the middle of the month, and then from that curriculum, the committee will get busy about their work. And so I just thank you. Thank you for being part of the process. I think at the end of the day, we will have a much better product in front of our children than we have had. I know there were questions on how in the world did this happen, and yes, the superintendent vetted this curriculum, that is true. Six years ago, I did vet the curriculum with a team of community members together. We made adjustments with that curriculum, really referencing pieces that wouldn't be taught and pieces that were appropriate to be taught. And through that process, over the past two years, there was an update that was not made aware to anyone in the school system, that they did make some changes in the curriculum, and there were some pieces added. And so you're thinking, how in the world does that happen? Well, when we adopt any type of curriculum, math curriculum, English language arts curriculums, history curriculums, we typically adopt those for a six-year period. It's the name, the company, everything within that is the same, and it doesn't change through the adoption. The name of this curriculum was Get Real. It's still Get Real, but it was updated two years ago, and there was never any conversation about that. I absolutely am responsible for that as the superintendent of the school, absolutely, no question about it. And so there were pieces that were added in the curriculum. I think there's four or five slides that were added in the curriculum and links added in the curriculum that, myself, I don't feel like they were appropriate at all for our kids to have, but they did for the past two years. And so moving forward, I am very certain that we will have a much better curriculum in front of our kids as we go through this process of making a very good decision about the curriculum moving forward. If there are any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer those afterwards. I won't labor our time together on that issue, but I do think we have an outstanding committee. We had wonderful people from our community that applied for this, and I'm really looking forward to moving forward with the committee. Other than that, I'd like to consider approval of an agreement between the School Board of Highlands County and Central.
If they miss emergency, an emergency item, please do add an emergency.
For number two?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, adding an emergency item to.
Before you go any further, Mr. Chair, if I could make just a couple of quick comments?
Yes.
There, there have been some public comments tonight about There, there have been some public comments tonight about, uh, what, what, what's the establishment of this committee? Quoted board policy on appointment of committees. I get all that. I just want to make sure everybody here understands something. And this is how I've advised the superintendent. If the superintendent appoints a board to help her develop curriculum, then that is not a sunshine committee per se. When I say sunshine, I mean, if the board chair appoints a committee to make recommendations to, to the board, that is a sunshine committee. Now what does that mean? Well, that means whenever you call up your friends who's on the committee and say, hey, let's do this, let's do that. That's not allowed, just like everybody up here, can't do that, okay? And, and it's not a very pleasant thing to appear before the Florida Commission on Ethics and be called on the carpet and be subject to penalties and have to hire a lawyer to represent you. Uh, I've seen that process several times and it's never been pretty, okay? So I, if you want to know the truth, I'm trying to save all of you by recommending to the superintendent that it be done this way. All right? So if you, if the sunshine's what you want and, and you're not willing to, are you willing not to speak to each other? That's fine. Well, the board chair appointed committee and you can make recommendations here. I don't think you want that, okay? So understand that. I want everybody here to understand why I'm recommending, what I'm recommending. I'm really trying to act in your best interest and we're trying to get this deal done, uh, the way it needs to be done, all right? I, I'm biting my tongue, trying not to say, I will say it though, I guess, that the, the policies that need to be followed are already in board policy. The complaints have been directly to the school board. Because it's a public forum, you get to be heard, everything is brought out. But the more the school board is direct, is involved in this process, the closer it gets to sunshine. Let's be clear about that, okay? So, uh, the, the other thing that I've heard tonight, uh, is about a new curriculum, absentee based. I know that's going throughout the community. That's, and if that's where the community wants to go, that's fine. It's, well, it is, it, there are things in statute and I, I agree, I've read the statute as well. Uh, I, I don't think it's, it's 100% required. I'm not advocating anything other than one way or another. Please understand that, I'm not, okay? But I will say this, that, uh, for a change in the board policy, I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands that there are requirements to change board policy. Uh, this is not, this is not just Highlands County. This is the state, statewide, every board attorney, I, I belong to the Florida Association of School Board Attorneys. We talked about this all the time. There is a certain process you have to go through to adopt a rule change. And a policy, board policy is a rule. And, and there are, to the extent that the issue is absentee based board policy, all right? Then we got to go through that process. And that process takes a minimum of around four months to get it done, as you're probably aware, okay? So I, I just want to make sure we understand. So if that's the process we want, A, there has to be a policy drafted. And then there is brought to the board, the board issues its notice of intent to advertise a policy for adoption, all right? Uh, then there's a, a period of at least 21 days after the first advertisement before it comes back to the board for a, a notice to develop public hearing type thing. Now, if during that time, somebody wants to request a workshop on the rule development, and I would say this particular one is ripe for such a thing, then, then they can make that request. The board holds a workshop, a public workshop. Uh, understand that at this workshop, there can be this opinion and that opinion. And the board has to listen to all the opinions to try to develop whatever it's going to do. That, that's just, uh, our, our way of doing things in this country. So they will, they will go through that. If it's too adversarial, then, then they can appoint, uh, a separate, uh, committee to, or I'm sorry, an arbitrator, whatever, to hear, take the testimony, hear both sides and do all of that. I, I have no idea how this would turn out. I'm not suggesting it's too adversarial, I'm just saying you need to know that, that's the process. So after the board goes to the development hearing, uh, depending on what is said about the rule, any changes they want to make to the rule or whatever, uh, then, then if there are material changes made to the rule, then it has to go back for rule development, hearing again. Uh, and again, somebody else who may disagree with the position the board has adopted then can request a workshop. So here we go. So we do the workshop for that, okay? Ultimately, there's a rule that the board says, this is what we're going forward with. And they do, and then they, they would, uh, after the development process is complete, go through a notice of final adoption. Again, at the final adoption, same thing, people can speak, talk about which way we want to go. But then the board would act one way or the other about what to do with that rule, okay? So that's the process. That's all I'm here to discuss with you is the process. Uh, to the extent that there is, it is desired that some absentee based curriculum be developed, then that, that is something that has to be done before we even get to the board's notice of intent to adopt a new policy. Has to say, what does that policy say? Because the public has a right to request a copy of it, examine it and, and comment or request a workshop if that is so desired, okay? So, uh, I just wanted to say those two things because I think they're both important for everybody here to understand.
Can you just reference the policy that you recommended, Shee Paul, in creating this board bill committee? Can you, can you reference that for our knowledge?
You know, I'm just, I'm trying to tell you this, that, that, uh, I don't know if it is a policy. I can tell you that a board appointed committee is clearly subject to sunshine law. A superintendent's appointed committee may or may not be subject to sunshine law, depending on what the recommendations are made and what comes up. I'm interpreting this as the superintendent is seeking to develop a new health curriculum. And in doing so, has requested members of the community assist her in developing that curriculum. She will then determine an appropriate curriculum and make, ultimately, it's her responsibility, just like with books and all these other things, to recommend to the board that this be adopted. And then the board reviews everything, again, public hearing before the adoption is completed, okay?
I understand.
All right. Well, I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm not saying there is or isn't one, but I can tell you that in general terms, that's the way it works. Thank you.
Okay, just a few other things. Uh, as an emergency item, I'd like to consider approval of an agreement between the School Board of Highlands County and Central Florida Behavioral Health Network, Inc., to request board workshops to review and discuss budgets on May 24th at four o'clock and May 26th at 3:30. So two that week.
Can you tell me the times again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Twenty-fourth at four and the twenty-sixth at 3:30. And we will not need to have an executive session tonight. I would like to request one on May 24th after the board meeting. All right, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is two, they have a motion to adopt the agenda. As revised.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as revised. Second.
You have a motion from Ms. Sheep, a second from Ms. Howerton, any public discussion?
I, what was the date, the time again for the twenty-sixth? I'm sorry.
Three thirty.
Three thirty, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I was a little slow. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Public discussion, back to the board for discussion. Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And the nine, motion to approve consent items, agenda items as presented?
Motion to approve?
Second. Oh, is that, okay, sorry.
Sorry, I'm waiting for you to say that.
Never mind, sorry. I wasn't looking at that, okay.
I will second it.
Okay, motion for Mr. Brantley, a second for Ms. Compton Twist, public discussion. Back to the board for discussion.
I just want to do it when you call my name.
Okay, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Sheep?
I will stay and I am on the board for the Boys and Girls Club. And, um, so I do have a conflict of interest. And I have my form right here, I'll sign. Thank you.
Okay, chair votes yes. Ten A, consider approval of the superintendent's recommendation for personnel?
Move approval.
Second.
A motion from Mr. or Ms. Howerton and a second from Mr. Brantley, any public discussion? Back to the board for discussion. Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Ten B, consider approval of expulsions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Ms. Sheep, a second from Ms. Compton Twist, there is no public discussion for that. And then back to the board for discussion. Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Ten C, consider approval of insurance committee's surgery plus recommendations. Do we need to have anybody to talk about that at all or? Or do we need to have a motion first?
Andrew Lethbridge, Deputy Superintendent. We've had extensive, uh, conversation on this. We've had workshops, um, on this topic and then also, um, a lot of conversation meetings. So I'm not going to rehash, uh, all of the different pieces. But just as a quick recap, um, the insurance, uh, committee has met and received the feedback back, uh, from the board. And they're coming forward with a recommendation as far as a cost share for the specific, uh, bariatric type surgeries, uh, through Surgery Plus of $3,000. Um, there's also limitations that there would be a one-time use of this type of surgery, that you could not have this type of surgery more than once and the school board paid for it. And then that you'd have to be an employee, uh, for two years, uh, before you would jump in the hopper to end up receiving this. Um, so those are the recommendations of the insurance, uh, committee. And just appreciated, uh, the board's feedback on the matter.
Now, as far as, uh, follow-up, uh, for complications, that was still not covered?
Um, we, we are working with, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield. And, um, that it would only be for surgeries, bariatric surgeries through Surgery Plus, um, that we would end up, uh, covering the, the complications for. When I say this, all of this is tied to the doctor coding it correctly. So we would have had an individual that ended up, you know, coming up saying that they had complications and it was covered. So, um, all of this is medical coding and I won't go down that, that track. Um, so, but specifically if the surgery was through Surgery Plus, that they would be able to be covered, uh, through our health insurance, the deductibles and all of those pieces would be in play uh, at that time. But yes, so the individuals that end up getting this type of surgery, there will be medical coverage. That was an important piece of this, so thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion from Mr. Brantley, a second from Ms. Sheep, public discussion? Back to the board for discussion?
Just, Mr. Lethbridge, if you will share to the insurance committee, we, we appreciate them looking back on that.
Absolutely, I mean, the feedback we gave, it was great, you know, having them do the work in advance before they had.
I know we went back and forth on that a lot.
Yeah.
So we appreciate them coming to some sort of a conclusion. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Ten D, request? Ten D for request permission to modify the documented experience from four years to two years for the position of mechanic for transportation while job description revisions go through the APA process?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, a motion from Mr. Brantley, a second from Ms. Sheep, public discussion? Back to the board for discussion?
I'd just like to say I appreciate, um, transportation giving us a heads up on this.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Twelve A, request approval of lease agreement for engineering program portables in the area between the School Board of Highlands County and the Sebring Regional Airport Authority?
Move approval, second.
Okay, a motion from Ms. Howerton, a second from Ms. Sheep, public discussion? Back to the board for discussion?
I just once again want to, um, say how much we appreciate everyone who has put this program together. It's, um, if you want to see something really amazing, go out to the airport and watch these kids building airplanes. It's, it's.
It's amazing.
It is amazing, it's amazing and they love it. And, um, the, the future that these kids have going to Emory Riddle, um, it's, it's just a, a great program, so.
State and nationally recognized program in our community.
They teach a lot more than just building airplanes.
They do.
Our flying airplanes.
Yes.
There are many aviation related jobs, maintenance, uh, air traffic control, any number of things that are all related.
And they get internships.
Internships, yes, ma'am. So I, I'll give a, I'll give a shout out to Mr. Roushy. He's done a great job and developing this program out there. Anybody goes to their annual dinner to see just what all those kids have done and what they're doing, very impressive.
And, and I will also just say, we just had a former student graduate from Emory Riddle, top of the class. And that was no mistake. It, it's all started right here. So anyway, enough on that.
We could lax poetic for years.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a great program.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Ms. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Did we get a public comment on that or missed that?
Yes, sir.
We did, we didn't get any. Twelve B, request approval of data security agreement between the School Board of Highlands County and Heartland Educational Consortium?
Move approval, second.
A motion from Ms. Howerton and a second from Ms. Sheep, any, uh, public discussion? Back to the board for discussion? Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Ms. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And then I, do I read all three of these and then do all three of it once is that the plan here?
There are all three development here.
Okay, so look, so just do thirteen A through thirteen C.
Sure.
It's plenty. And we'll do one vote, okay? Do you want to add anything to the?
Well, we usually get a, a motion and a second and then I confirm publication.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Ms. Sheep, a second from Ms. Compton Twist?
And I would like to confirm with the secretary that we have in fact published each of these three. Madam Secretary, excuse me, I, I beg your pardon, I did not mean to be disrespectful. Okay, so that'll be attached to the record. The three policies up for consideration are revisions to the LEED BPK Fair Professional, uh, Job Description, Report on Development on the revisions of the Fair Professional Instructional Program Job Description. And then, uh, the revisions to School Board Policy 5722 on school sponsored publications and productions. So, uh, all three of these, uh, this is the development hearing. We're requesting approval to advertise these for final adoption. And that would be, again, a, a 28-day process. Back to you.
Okay, well, public, a public comment? Back to the board for discussion? Ms. Sheep?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I would note for the public too, that all of these, uh, policies, uh, proposed for adoption, there's a special place on the school board website now that's been set aside. So all you gotta do is go to School Board Policy and, and there's a link directly there to all the policies that are up for potential revision or adoption. And so it's easy to find, easy to look for, and, uh, it's, it's always there for you.
Okay, to fourteen A, consider approval of out-of-state travel for Avon Park High School chorus trip to Carnegie Hall in New York City for next school year, spring 2023. And, um, get a little bit of chills when we say this because before, this was the one thing we approved before COVID, was kind of making this round. And then we said, you know, shut it down after the fact, but, um, just, I hope we just keep going forward with some good policies.
I will make a motion to approve, second.
A motion from Ms. Sheep, a second from Ms. Howerton? Is she here? Ms. Loomis, do you want to say something? I love you two.
I won't be long, I just want to publicly say thank you to the School Board and Superintendent from Long Shore. We went through an arduous ordeal a couple of years ago and we did many revisions. And you were resilient and you allowed us to be resilient and allowed these students to experience something that will be life-changing and has been life-changing and not just for me, but also for Sebring High School. So thank you for finding a way for this to be win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public discussion? Back to the board for discussion.
I think we said it all when.
Oh, yes. Ms. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Fourteen B, consider approval of agreement between the School Board of Highlands County and Carnegie Learning Professional Services for school year 2022-2023. Okay, at this time we hear no motion, so we move to fourteen C. Fourteen C, consider approval of agreement between the School Board of Highlands County and the new teacher project, TNTP, for school year 2022-2023. Okay, I hear no motion on that either. So we're going to move on to fifteen A. Consider approval to award contract for duck work replacement at Avon, oh, this is exciting stuff coming up.
Yeah, this is what we want.
Yeah. Consider approval for, to award a contract for duck work replacement at Avon Park Middle School to American First Air Conditioning SBHC 2122-39.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Shoup, a second from Mr. Brantley. Public discussion? Back to the board for discussion.
It's just crazy to see the price differences and only two vendors even did it.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate Frank knowing that he was sick and that he let us all know the information. That's huge.
Okay, Ms. Shoup?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Fifteen B, consider approval to award contract for fire alarm system at Fred Wild Elementary to KC Fire Systems Incorporated SBHC 2122-28.
Move approval. Second.
Again, it wasn't good, right?
Yeah. And he did say that they had used them all before, so.
And negotiated the price down, wasn't that the one?
He did.
Yes, yes.
I think I got Ms. Howerton and Ms. Shoup's second, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Um, back to the board for discussion? Or, I'm sorry, to the public for discussion, and then back to the board for discussion. Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Fifteen C, request approval of memorandum of understanding between the School Board of Highlands County, Highlands County Educational Association and the Highlands County Education Support Personnel Association. Anybody want to add about? Well, move approval, yeah, I know that, but anybody want to talk about what it is? Like, Mr. Lethbridge is here.
Yeah.
I think we had Howerton and Shoup, was that correct?
Yes.
So the agreement specifically is really looking at summer school work. And as I've heard from several tonight, I think that we could all agree upon is we have outstanding teachers and outstanding administrators and school staff here in, in this county. In summer school, we're really looking to enhance and try to attract some additional through financial means. So for the teachers, really this agreement would be looking at adding a thousand dollars to all teachers if they're working summer school. For all non-instructional, it's an additional five hundred dollars for them. For non-instructional, just as remembering back to the last board meeting, you would have increased an hourly rate for the non-instructional, so there's other incentives that are happening for that body as well. And then for administrator and also the other individuals that end up working at the school sites that summer school is hosted, there's a lot of extra work for them as well, from custodial to front office to front desk and all of the different people in between. So this was adding an additional five hundred dollars for them, so incentives really across the board for our schools. So just appreciated, you know, the board's input and the superintendent's input into making that happen. And I'll say, as far as the teachers' union and non-instructional union, they were very pleasantly surprised through this and, and just at least share with me their appreciation of you thinking about many different parties with that, so thank you.
Public discussion? Back to the board for comments and discussion.
I just want to say what you just said about they appreciate it. We appreciate them being willing to take their summer and work with the students.
It has been tough since COVID, and I know, you know, we owe the teachers everything we can give them and support staff just because they, it's just been hard, and it's not just school system, it's everywhere in this community that we've had. The people that are working are having to work harder than they ever did and just getting through that process, but we appreciate anything, anything we can do to help that process. We can do it, so thank you. Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Fifteen D, consider approval to award contract for exterior painting of Sebring Middle School's gym and softball dugouts to GSF Enterprises Incorporated SBHC 2122-28.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Shoup, a second from Mr. Brantley. Any public comments? Back to the board for discussion. Ms. Shoup?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Emergency items, consider approval of agreement between School Board of Highlands County and Central Florida Behavioral Health Network Incorporated.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion from Ms. Shoup, a second from Ms. Howerton. Public comments, discussion? Back to the board for discussion. Ms. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Howerton?
Yes.
Ms. Compton Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
And I'd just like to say, Ms. Blackman, I appreciate the phone call.
Any legislative issues? Planning and zoning? HCEA, HCESPA members' comments? Are they here or not? Very good. Good is good. Take it.
Yes.
School Board attorneys' comments?
Thank you. Well, the first thing I noted was the guitar player on the video.
Sure you did.
Clearly says he's responsible, so that might apply to all guitar players, I'm not sure. But we'll go with that. And in that same vein, for the last three years, we, this issue has not arisen because of COVID, but this year it's raising its head again, and it's simply this. As a musician, I like to go to the Florida Folk Festival when it's held, and this year they're holding it for the first time in three years. And so because of that, of course, when does it begin for me to be there as a, working with the festival? That's on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, that I need to be there. And so my apologies with the board's permission, and I've, you know, I try to schedule vacations and everything around these board meetings. My attendance has been pretty good, I think, over the years, but I did, my April of 2019 vacation, I had to reschedule to 2022. I missed that meeting, and so I apologize. This would be maybe my last ever attendance at the festival, so I'd like to make it. Just saying, long way of saying, I'd like for Mr. LaBozo or someone I can find to attend, if that's okay, twenty-fourth, that's the next meeting. Next issue is the, I discussed with you several meetings ago, this park down here at the corner. I kind of need some guidance as to what the board would like to do. If the board would like to convey it to the county, it needs to be declared surplus, and we will go through the appropriate procedure to make that happen at a future board meeting. If the board does not wish to convey the property, then, then one of two things will happen. We could lease it to the county. The county's indicated they are not open to a lease. They convey it or remove the playground altogether. So, you know, we're not in the business of providing county parks and playgrounds. That's their business, not ours. The particular location is there because of a prior lease of the property. They do not wish to re-lease the property, or lease it again, I should say. That's their decision, not yours, I would say. So I just need to know, so we can respond back to the county, if you've got any thoughts on this as to whether we wish to pursue declaring this surplus and convey it, or if it wishes to be retained by the school board and not reconvey. Don't know if you have any thoughts on that or?
As far as it's not next to an elementary school or anything like that, I think as far as conveyed to the county, but with the understanding if it's no longer used as a playground, it would revert back to us. Can we do that?
Reverter provision, of course.
I don't think I'm leaving the same spot there.
Everybody likes that?
Yeah, I like that.
And just understand too, well, we'll leave it like that. Okay, got it. And the only other thing I would address is the issue of YouTube video thing, okay? I'm like almost everybody out here. I like the YouTube being up too. It's easier to look at, so we like to be able to refer, things like that. We haven't gotten a notice lately about us being in violation of anything. So I'm not advising one way or the other, so to speak, because I don't want it's all recorded. Well, the lawyer said it was okay to post those things, so off we go. But, you know, we, we, maybe if we did post them and if we receive a violation objection, then we can react accordingly. Perhaps until then, if you, if the board desires to go forward with that, we can do that, you know? I'll leave it like that.
I got zero to hide. Let's.
I'm fine with it.
Whatever. Let's put it out there.
You know.
We need to be as transparent as possible, and that's what we're going to do. We're here, I mean, she's listening to us live, so.
I was going to say something in my comments in regards to that, but I'm thinking we've got those dollars, and we, we also, they were brought, given to us by COVID, which, you know, we've got a room full of people here, and I love seeing these faces, but can we use those dollars to enhance our equipment? So.
Can we do what we couldn't afford to do before now?
They can actually hear us.
Yes, and use those dollars.
I will say that I watched the previous workshop today online, and it was sad at times, but when I texted she.
I'm sorry, if you want to speak, you really, but this really isn't a time to talk. No, so I just wanted to see if we could look into that.
We can look into it.
Yeah. Yeah, because I think then you wouldn't have as many people.
We all want the same thing. We want to transparent. We always wanted transparent. That's never been a concern for this board to hide anything.
You know.
We're out there.
Well, I would think anything to prevent the spread of COVID.
Exactly, that's what I was just thinking.
Would be appropriate expenditure, okay?
Thank you.
So to me, large gatherings of people in close proximity to each other.
We want to see your smiling faces.
Be creative.
More would be able to.
But a short search online, if I interrupt a little bit, you can see all of these lawsuits that have happened all over the country, from colleges to Florida State University to California schools, to everywhere. They just go, little, small places, big places, whatever it is, they're always looking, so we just want to make sure.
Make sure we do it correctly.
Always looking.
From anywhere, all over the world.
And I'm just saying, and still they start looking at us real closely and say, don't do that anymore, then whatever. It's not for me to recognize you, sir. I think the time for public comment is over, Mr. Overfield.
Let's go on to Ms. Compton Twist. We're going to mix it up. That is goodbye what's on the list here.
I'm just happy to see everyone here. I'm so glad that we have a full room. Sorry about that. Can everybody hear that one? Like I say, every meeting, we welcome you, and we're happy to hear your comments, and keep them coming because even though you think that people may not be listening, they are listening. We're listening, so. And also, as I always like to highlight, Memorial Elementary, they were so, so cute, so adorable. I loved that video. For those, if anybody didn't see it, that was really cute. I love how they put that together. But that's all I'm going to say tonight. I'm going to keep it short.
Ms. Shoup?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to brag on a former student. Was, I think she graduated in 2019, Jade Zinnis, who is on a softball scholarship at Troy University, was named to the All-Sun Belt Second Team for their conference, and it goes on in the announcement, it says, "The Sebring, Florida native leads the Trojans on a thirteen-double." Anyway, I'm not going to read you all that part, but she is doing extremely well, and I think it's very important to recognize our former students as much as it is our current students, because they're still part of us. And I also want to say that, one, the Memorial Elementary, I, that is so cute. But I also went online to Polk County with their health education, and they have a section you can click on, on their website, that shows you all the slides. And I, I think when we come up with this new curriculum, that that would be something that the parents could look at before. It goes on, it also has the consent form there, if parents want to opt out, so it's all very open. And I think after what we went through, this would be very good to have when it's all finalized, so.
Just like that district site?
Yes, yes, Polk County, yes, School Board, yes, sorry. And I just, Mr. Cora, I hope you have a good time on the twenty-fourth. I know that you, I know you very much enjoy that. And once again, also I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, taking the time out of your evening, out away from your family. We appreciate y'all being here, and we have nothing to hide, I guarantee you. So on that note, just want to say everyone have a good evening.
Ms. Howerton?
Just kudos to Memorial Elementary School. Always looking forward to the character word and having our schools in front of us and our kids. They did an awesome job. And back when I ran, Mr. Brantley says it was way, way the beginning of time. I ran on communication, so I love seeing your faces out here, and, and I, and I love in a way that we can communicate to people that are not able to be here, to be able to see our meetings and, and hear what we're, we've been sitting in these chairs for. Also, well, I mentioned about the, the videoing, that we might could look into that. And then I've been kind of talking to some schools, and I kind of share with Dr. Longshore, and kind of because, and Sunshine can't talk to the other board members, but I've been visiting a couple of sites, and then it was even mentioned at our athletic task force, is that our custodial service at our schools, I guess, a lot of the teachers or a lot of the administration is saying they don't have a full staff, the company that we're going with. And so, and it's just like we're having trouble getting teachers, but you know what, folks? We've got a contract with that company. That's not our problem, that they can't get people. But when I hear that we don't have a full staff and our schools are not being maintained, and then I've got a school with the plant operator, he's the only male, and they're all females, and the females can't do something, you know, that the males can do, they can't climb ladders, they're, you know, so somehow we've got to kind of reel in that company and tell them we've got concerns at our schools and what they're doing because I know what it was like when I came on the board, and I feel that our schools have taken pride in what they look like. And so if I'm going to have a custodial service, I want them to be doing what's expected in their contract. And then also, I want to be sure that the board members, I'd asked Marlene to make a copy, and that was on the Hill Gustav Middle School numbers, and in all fairness to, to Carla, I want to say kind of, in the beginning, it was mentioned instructional only. There were certain dates, but my goal as a board member was to see what happened when we made the transition of a moving principal to another school. And so I do want you to look at those numbers that we lost a faculty, and no, it's not said that they left that school because of, of something, but I've even kind of got Marlene kind of looking. I, I want numbers because I think this is a sign at a school that we need to just kind of look at it closely and see what's happening at that school. And so it's not just fourteen that we've lost at Hill Gustav Middle, and folks are, they're continuing to leave. So I just really think we need to address that. And then I know there was a couple of things on curriculum that were not addressed this evening, and, and kind of been going around and talking to the schools. And yeah, I appreciate the feedback of getting the emails. Now, what I saw in the emails was I'm interested, not that I want it, but then when I told them the dollar amounts, that's what, you know what? That's what I want to share with them, because that TNTP was a million dollars, folks. And I know where those dollars were going to come from, and it's temporary, and just like the Carnegie, but that, that's a lot of money, folks.
It's a lot of money.
That, you know, sometimes if we could get the teacher input, because I'm told that some schools have actually made some recommendations for those dollars and were actually kind of deterred from what they wanted to do, and they had a subject area that they saw kind of a concern that they wanted to work in the summer, two days, and they were told no. So that's where, I mean, I don't know if you were aware of that, Dr. Longshore, so I'd like those.
I'd like those, those schools brought to me, if I've got teachers that are willing